We're good.
Okay, we're going to call this meeting to order. We're going to start out with the pledge of allegiance. Like nothing in the corner by the door. And pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the Lord God. Okay, this meeting has been properly posted in all in our voting place. He's a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion to. Go ahead.
To approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Katie made a motion, Phil made the second. Any questions? In all favor say aye.
Aye.
All the same time. Motion's carried. We are now on to the board reorganization. We have elections of officers. And we will start out with the, they call it president. Are there any nominations? For president?
I'll nominate Katie to be president.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second for. Not my being assuming decision, president. Are there any other nominations? Okay, then all the bakers say aye.
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 All the same time. Motion's carry. Vice President. That's Phil right now. I nominate Phil to be vice president.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Any other nominations? And all the favors say aye.
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 All the same signs. Motion's carried. Clerk. Was Chris?
Chris.
Chris was clerk, so.
Hold down.
We have somebody else who would like to step into that position.
I can do that position.
Okay.
I'll nominate Katie Wilman to be the court.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there any other nominations? All in favor then say aye.
Aye.
Hold, same sign. Motion's carry. Treasurer. You. Jennifer. Would you like Jennifer to continue?
Sure.
I will make the motion to nominate Jennifer as treasurer.
I'll second.
We have a second. Any other nominations? All in favor that Jennifer be treasurer, say aye.
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 Okay, all the same sign. Motion's carry. Lindsay, you get to be the member.
I'm great.
Okay, committees, we've got the negotiation team. As of right now, Jennifer and myself have been on that. I would like to stay on with Jennifer, would you?
I would like to stand.
Is there anybody else that would oppose? Jennifer, I stay on that committee. Well, okay, all favor then of Jennifer and. And myself being out of negotiations committee, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All the same time, motion's carry. Paul's saying. It's Phil and Katie.
It is, yeah. We rarely have a, have meetings, but every once in a while. I don't mind staying on it, well, because we don't, we don't end up doing it hot, but if, you know, someone else would like to jump on or would they like to try and get a little more involved in that, then that's fine, I think.
Hey, we gather the handbook, we ask the handful to choose to be vice president of the committee, and that will be happening prior to next quarter. So, that'll be the next big policy.
So. So Lindsay and Katie, they're perfect. Agreeable?
I'm great.
Okay, all favor then say aye.
Aye.
All the same time. Okay, motion's carry. Finance, that's. Phil and. And how was that?
Chris. Chris.
No, I, I have a dead point in my career and I have to be a deep.
So who would like to be on that one, Phil?
Or more generally, who would like to be on that? I got put on because no one else wanted to.
I am.
I think Katie wants to be on that.
I can do it.
That was Jennifer, wasn't it?
Yep.
It was.
Jennifer and Phil. Quick vote up. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Okay, facility. That is, then Katie and myself, I would like to stay on that. Katie would like to, is there any objections? Katie and I stay on that?
Well, thank you for the note.
Then all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion's carry. Now, this is the big one, CISA one round. That was. Chris, wasn't it?
Can we describe that one really quick, Ron?
Um, it is, you get invited to CISA one meetings.
Webinars now.
Webinars now, I'm sorry, webinars now. Um, and it's just an opportunity to get involved at the CISA level, which is basically a region of education in which the state of Wisconsin kind of breaks us up. There are 10 CISA's, sure, or 11? Or 12, 11 or 12. So there's a few of them, basically in southeast Wisconsin. And it's just an opportunity, if you choose to, to really learn more and hopefully interact with other school board members from other school districts. Um, our school district has not had a very heavy presence in the CISA or the WASB, from what I understand.
So it's, I guess, ultimately, it's very optional. It's something that we have to elect, but what you do with it is.
And the bar is pretty long.
Well, I need to go anywhere, so I, I can do it.
Okay.
All in favor of Lindsay? Say aye.
Aye.
All the same time. WASB? Who was that? That's Jennifer.
Jennifer, Jennifer, I'm sorry. It was written on the sheet of January, should fix that.
Yep, we'll fix that. You want to continue, Jennifer?
Uh, sure.
Okay. Thank you for volunteering. All in favor of Jennifer continuing to be the WASB, say aye. All the same time, motion's carry, student achievement with Phil and Katie and Jennifer.
And Jennifer.
And Jennifer.
And continue, this is all three of you again.
I'd like.
I would like to stay on that, yeah.
Okay. All in favor of Phil, Jennifer, and Katie? Continue on the student achievements, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All the same sign. Motion's carry. We are done with the, we need a, we need designation of public depository to check sign, to write, chair.
Yes, um, it should be the president and treasurer.
Okay, so we've already got those then? Decide on that stuff, okay. Alright, so we're all set then, so we declare that through our, our board's decisions.
Okay, we are now to the approval of the minutes from March 24th, open. Mark April 6th closed and April 21st closed.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of Monday, March 24th, 6:00 PM, open session, Monday, April 6th, at 4:30 PM, closed session, and Tuesday, April 1st, 4:30, open session or closed session.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there any additions, corrections to those? Did all the favors say aye? Aye.
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 All the same sign. Motion's carry. We're out to approval of financial report and bill listing. Where's Chris? And we need him now.
Alright, I'll give it a go. I'm going to try to read the correct month this time. I'll make a motion to approve structure listing. Payroll, check number 55371 through 55372, with the amount of $141.29. Check number 55373 through 55374, with the amount of $94.65. Direct deposit number 900051475 through 900051586, with the amount of $150,899.50. Direct deposit number 900051587 through 900051689, with the amount of $136,732.83. Direct deposit number 900051290 through 900051793, with the amount of $148,871.74. Wire transfer number 201900233 through 201900269, with the amount of $336,638.95. Total payroll of $800.
You misspoke with that one.
For the numbers or the, the dollar amount?
The, the dollar amount.
Thank you. Thank you for putting me on. I tend to ramble, please. For total payroll, the amount of $3,378.96. Accounts payable, check number 54172 through 54218, with the amount of $124,422.52. AK wire transfer 201900231 through 201900262, with the amount of $8,221.58. Credit card transaction 032020, with the amount of $22,823.97. ATH deposit numbers 192000168 through 19200172, with the amount of $972.34. For total accounts payable of $156,440.65. For total disbursement of $559,819.50.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there any questions that you are not able to get answered? In all favor say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion's carry. We are on to. Uh, there are no delegations to be heard.
No delegation to be heard.
We're out to district administrators report. There were no donations, but we do have.
We do have two personnel items that came in over the weekend. So, um, we'd like to present to, to the board of our resignation for Maria Schmidt. I would like to thank her for her year of service here at the Merkin Community School District. We wish Maria the best of luck and thank you for your service. Um, and the other resignation that came in was Brian Clink. And Brian's been with us for 22 years and would like to say thank you very, very much for your continued commitment and wish him the best of luck in his next position as well. So, uh, thank you, Brian. But, uh, so you have in front of you emailed to the other board members, again, just looking for the approval of the resignations of Maria Schmidt and Brian Clink, effectively, after this contract, I basically resigned his individual teacher contract for the 2021 school year.
Make a motion to accept the resignation of Brian Clink and Maria Schmidt.
Okay.
We have a second, make it Phil. Is there any discussion? And all in favor say aye.
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 All the same sign. Motion's carry. We're out to the information portion of the district administrator.
Sure, we wanted to, just to keep the board in the loop, as where we are at. Right now, we are in our next phase of planning for our virtual learning. Um, we communicated our plan to our families and to our staff running through May 22nd. Um, after May 22nd, we, right now, are in our continuation of that continuation of learning plan, to see what it looks like after May 22nd. So, uh, we are developing those plans and really trying to announce some things that would continue learning all the way through June 4th or June 5th. Um, we do know that at the end of the year, learning gets a little bit interrupted with celebration day, class field trips, graduation and things. But, uh, so we continue to take a look at our current reality and make those appropriate adjustments as we move forward. Um, the expectation of our staff is that we are moving our curriculum forward in these next few rounds of learning. Uh, and continue to modify as needed for individual families, uh, differentiating as we certainly can in this virtual environment. So, uh, again, we continue to be moving forward with our plan to be having included and brought in Google Meet, which has been very well received by both our staff and our families. So, um, any questions on what's going on for virtual learning from the board?
Uh, more of a forward thinking question, I guess. We're doing virtual learning and correcting curriculum as you said. You know, obviously, that's not going to be effective at home as it would be if, you know, everyone was at school. So, my question is, or, or maybe my suggestion would be to, you know, use some of the preschool, you know, uh, teacher servant days to plan and coordinate, you know, the extra push we're going to need at the beginning of next year. You know, assuming we're back in the building at least, in order to try and bring everyone back up. Obviously, we do that to some extent every year, but it obviously, you know, would be worse next year than, than the normal year.
Right, yeah, and we are planning that as we're looking to prepare for the, uh, the 2021 school year, but we're also seeing that we can leverage some time opportunities that we might have in the remaining of the 1920 school year and the teacher contract as well. So, um, that is a big push, and that's something that we continue to talk about, not only as our district, but our region is very concerned about what does the beginning of the year look like. Um, we all know in the summer slide, and, uh, we know that some of our kids in a virtual environment just start uh, that same kind of learning, and that we're going to need that, uh, the extra attention to get them up to speed or to kind of where they were at before. So, um, and that's really why we really want to continue that, that learning moving forward, continue our curriculum. The big concern about the region, no differently in our school district, is our extreme little, little learners. Um, as, because that foundational reading, foundational math, foundational love for learning, foundational learning, problem solving skills are super critical. Um, you know, the content will come, but ultimately, we want to bring in that, that learning uh, experience as well as that, that high level of need. So, Phil, that is on our radar, and, uh, we're, we're trying to make some plans about how we can possibly start to think about that um, prior to our staff leaving, uh, for the, uh, summer, uh, at the beginning of June.
Are we continuing to modify?
Um, well, not, not terribly modified. We would like to make some individual accommodations for families who are either requesting it or who we've reached out to, and we can either see need a little extra or need a little more. Um, and I would continue to have parents continue to reach out to not only our friends, but their teachers with feedback, so that we can accommodate, um, whatever the family needs are. Um, whether it's, uh, need more of, or need less of, or need something different as well. So, but the, the main framework of it with mini lessons and virtual teaching, as well as Google Meet, is still one. That's what we're writing.
And is there, is there a daily expectation of all those things?
We, we try not to make it as teacher dependent. Um, for instance, at the primary school in Merkin AJ, right here, we can probably attest that. We expect every primary school teacher in their classroom to have a morning meeting, a read aloud, a, a reading lesson, uh, writing lesson, and a mathematics lesson, I think, as well. Um, at the intermediate school, we've asked all of our hot tent level teachers in their classes to continue learning forward uh, in the form of a mini lesson, as well as assignments and, uh, you know, either informative or summative way to, to move forward, uh, to continue to track that progress of learning. So that has been the expectation. Uh, they also have their morning meeting, uh, but then it gets more content specific as it relates to what they're expecting. Um, we expect that daily learning to continue, and, for instance, when, uh, in mathematics and literacy, we really take a look at our spoken sequence. We are planning on, okay, we still have our spoken sequence, so in mathematics, we have to get through our curriculum. And, uh, the expectation is that we achieve that. Um, we know in some grade levels, like for instance, sixth grade, their curriculum isn't as rigid, and when I take a look at their calendar, it's just tight as it relates to other, as going through the math curriculum. You know, some of them had 200 lessons, we have to pare it down compared to some of those other grades. But, um, from the intermediate lens, we do anticipate getting through our curriculum, in particularly those essential skills. So hopefully, to Phil's point, you know, we can have some remnants of, hey, remember we learned this last year during, you know, March and April? But, uh, we'll see how much it actually sinks in, because it is a different experience to Phil's point, being virtual than it is being real time. All very, very good questions.
Now, when will we go off summer school?
That's a really good question. I was going to update everybody in the COVID impact for the 20s. So, uh, that's a good transition, uh, as we think about summer school. Excuse me. Um, that's really still continuing to be the big question mark, and as we know, um, first date statute at this time, the state of Wisconsin does not recognize in its DPI calculation of minutes, virtual learning in grades K through 6. Um, 7 through 12, they recognize it as, uh, credit recovery, you know, because you can earn credits towards graduations and things like that. And they do it in 7th and 8th grade because it works towards promotional points and making sure that they meet, uh, 8th grade graduation criteria. But, um, from a primary standpoint, right now, there are hearings in Madison talking about how we can possibly open up virtual learning and have it count towards DPI minutes, which ultimately affect our revenue limit. Um, the conversation at Madison is more of an equity, because down here in the Merkin Community School District, we're blessed enough to have internet access for us to be able to give computers and for kids to be able to continue learning if they choose to in the summer. Um, not all communities have that opportunity, and, uh, so that's really kind of what we're trying to, the state is trying to navigate what that looks like. So, from a school district of, uh, from the Merkin Community School District standpoint, um, our first, uh, really kind of planning phase has been, we're going to start to engage our staff. We have engaged our staff, both in the ones who have said yes to summer school and our entire staff, to see if it's something they want to do. Um, we want to know what kind of staffing levels we could have, and then ultimately begin to backtrack and develop a program that fits the staffing needs, but ultimately, hopefully tries to meet our community needs. Um, we do know at this point, we will not have an in-phase summer school program in the month of June. Okay, that has been taken off the table. Uh, DPI has said really no, if there's no school contact with students face to face, whether that be athletically through WIAA or academically until July 1st. So, my hope, but again, no, no, we can't commit anything until they tell us. Uh, it all depends on where the state is as it relates to phase 1, 2, and 3, as I'll, I'll find you to the federal government or the state level. Um, my goal would be to have face to face instruction for kids in July. Um, what that looks like, I don't know, whether it's this ratio of 1 to 10, and we need to control ins and outs, you know, continue to maintain social distance, we'll continue to get those um, requirements set for us. Um, but we're not quite sure what that looks like. So, um, we do anticipate possibly having a virtual summer school. Um, and we can start to plan for that. We do have some staff who are interested in that, but ultimately, we have to create the frameworks. But it also comes down to, is the state going to fund it? And then it comes down to, is it something that the school district wants to put forward at the states that we're not going to fund? I had a couple of conversations with two larger K12s, and that was their big concern, is what happens if the states, if we can't find a way to equitably uh, distribute the minutes onto the revenue limit, the school districts are on their own. So, um, that'll raise a whole bunch of other questions that will have to bring to the board for some finalization, because we probably could be looking at some seeds or something like that too. So, so Lindsay, to answer your question about summer school, we still are kind of continuing to plan. We're going to start with our staff, and then we continue to, we should hear in the next week or so from the state as it relates to what they're going to allow us to do possibly. But ultimately, the state of Wisconsin will guide whether or not students can come into our buildings. Um, we would love to plan for some sort of August jumpstart. Phil, to your point, um, would love to try to bring in, you know, a larger number of kids to kind of get this jump started. Um, ultimately, we need staff to do that, and traditionally, August has not been a very high attended or a high desired staffing time for our teachers to come in. Uh, it's been family vacations, prepping for their classrooms and stuff like that. So, um, more to come on the summer school with the state of Wisconsin, has not issued any direction. Hence the reason why we haven't committed anything to our families. So, so more to come in the area of summer school.
Would we be giving special considerations in the summer school programs that are um, the academic ones, you know, the accelerated math, as there's, you know, at various grade levels, the, you know, bringing kids up to grade level, that work that happens over the summer in addition to all the, like, awesome fun things.
Yep.
Is there a different consideration for those, or are they just kind of grouped together?
No, very, two different considerations. One is, the, the one piece of Phil, you, you mentioned in this, is the curriculum component that we really rely on, um, is the accelerated math component between second and third grade. Um, that's the one piece, but that's one piece that we know we can do virtually. Okay, that's one piece. We've got that figured out, and obviously, we'd be working with families and things like that. Um, the academic piece, to be honest with you, uh, Phil, is something obviously of our top priority. Now, I will tell you, this has been a common K12 theme, is kids who struggle with school, face to face school. This virtual learning has been very, very difficult. So, it's difficult to continue to kind of lean on virtual for kids who need to get caught up if in fact they weren't really showing great progress these last six to seven, eight weeks. So, those are all going to be individual considerations, but I will tell you that we are going to target core academics for people coming through our doors first and then get into the enrichment, fun, uh, depending on what staffing levels we have. Um, ultimately, we know that, uh, our enrichment classes, or not enrichment, but our core academic classes have always been smaller in ratio. Right around that, you know, we can easily run those, and we've always run them typically less than 10 kids. So when we think of that ratio with proper social distancing, we could. Um, compared to Legos, Princess Land, um, AJ runs a whole bunch of athletic types of things. Um, you know, whether we can run those or not, we're not quite sure. But Phil, we will push priority to more than likely the academics. But we also know that the academic push will be more of a face to face than a virtual, but we'll see what we can to, to really create it. You know, a lot of it will depend on what, how many kids we can put in the classroom safely as directed by the state of Wisconsin.
Last follow up question for right now. So Ben, are we or should we be considering a different staffing approach for the coming year if we know we're going to need more support for kids? You know, more aides or intercollegiate distance, or, you know, that's something that we're thinking about yet, or, or that's just too far out right now?
Sure, well, we, we are taking a look at, and this is kind of the end of the year stuff, and this is some of the work that our teachers and our administrative teams, in particular, at the primary school level. Uh, with that, uh, working with our kindergarten through 4K through our, our fourth grade staff, really highlighting some of those kids who need some extra support um, in order to do that. Um, but that's a really good question, Phil, and, and you can certainly respond from a staffing level. Um, once we know a little bit more whether it is how many kids we have, because right now, we are continuing intervention. Um, you know, math intervention is going, reading intervention is going, the other special education service is going right now. But, um, we certainly can respond to an additional need if need be. Um, we are blessed with the number of, or the class sizes that we have, which really leverage personalized attention. And, uh, that's really working with our staff about how do we leverage the opportunities that we have to really get the best bang for our buck, given the time that we have for it. So, more to come on that as we take a look at end of the year data. Um, and, you know, trying to do the best we can with an assessment, because, um, we're trying to continue to navigate about who's doing what work at times. So. But good, all good questions, all good follow ups, and I can say from an administrative and instructional specialist level, all things that we are thinking of and that are at the forefront of our, of our thoughts as we're continuing to plan.
Um, when you said end of year data, what do you, what data are you going to be looking at? We're not going to have our normal forms of math testing or. When you said end of year data, what do you, what data are you gonna be looking at? We're not gonna have our normal forms of math testing or A testing or anything.
Right. And then ultimately, what we would be looking at is who is making adequate progress. You know, because our last round of data was right around in the January time. We we are doing for some of our interventions, you know, we can do some of our H web testing and some of those progress monitoring tools. But we're really taking a look at formative and summative assessments to kind of monitor how kids are doing. And that's kind of the, probably the classroom data will drive more than that standardized data. Yep, but a very good question because we're not gonna be math testing everybody at all. So that that data will not help measure student progress and student growth. It's gonna be more teacher formative data. So that moves us into some of the things we're hearing about from the COVID is we start talking about budget repair bills and for schools saving money while we are not formally educating kids in our regular order of schools. Sherry did run some scenarios for us and took a look and is anticipating a conservative about $107,000 savings from from not running what we call face to face instruction or real school within our buildings. Those savings come from some energy savings, pupil transportation, supplies. But, you know, so just some some basic scenarios and as part of the board package, you can see some of those those savings areas are listed on the tab, one of the tabs there too. And the other scenarios that Sherry has been running, again, and listening to other business managers in the state responding to, what are some of the budget scenarios that we are looking at? So ranging from 200 to, you know, 10%, you know, $700,000 range. But again, we still are going to be waiting and hearing. Like we mentioned before, we do not anticipate an answer to this anytime soon. Ultimately, the economy will help dictate what are the next steps as it relates to school funding for this upcoming school year. We are in the middle of minimum, middle of a biennial budget. So even for the Merkin Community School District, we were anticipating a minimum of a $300 increase per pupil because we were set below the $10,000 minimum. Is that gonna be the case anymore? Like, everybody had $10,000 and we ducked. We're really not quite sure. So we're kind of in this minimal land. So we are planning accordingly. Obviously, the $107,000 will not fill the entire gap. So as you can see, moving forward, we did have some facility projects that we were anticipating. The administrative team is is recommending at this point to pause some of those to so we can make sure that we can move forward with those once we have a settled budget. Because again, this school finance world, there's some concern for this year, but everybody knows kind of for the 2021 school year, we've got, we personally have a strong Fund 41, Fund 46, we have strong fund balance. Not all school districts do. The main concern across the state is what's gonna happen with the 21, 22 budget. When the new biennial budget comes out, and all of a sudden, we have a new reality. Summer school, all of a sudden, because Sherry, we have about 13 FTE that we count out for summer school. More like 17. And if you count that approximately $10,000, you know, 17 times 10,000 gives you $170,000. So that is a significant amount, just even for our our piece of our pie and for our revenue to. So so ultimately, what we are looking at is saving dollars from this current budget, not only from the surplus that we have, just, you know, remaining surplus or pluses and minuses that didn't come through. But ultimately, the other piece that is saved for not having face to face instruction. We do anticipate having a competent $200,000 surplus that we can roll into the next school year to help soften whatever it might be coming our way a little bit later this fall or late summer. So. So yeah, so that's kind of kind of highlights some of the the information as it relates to COVID and the finances and summer school. We're not even thinking of right now about what it would look like if we're not allowed that September. So that's a long ways away and lots of things happened before that to really focus our attention on from a planning and organizational standpoint. Any court questions on impact of COVID or preparation for summer school 2021? Okay, the last piece, it came up at the last board meeting, just kind of wanted to share the solar projects. The solar project is going very, very well. Obviously, as soon as we put it in, Murphy's Law will say that. And we had, we had an awful last four months, basically, for solar, according to the Farmer's Home Act. But as you can see, we did link it to the agenda and is in our on our website that people can monitor our solar production, is measured daily, it talks about CO2 emissions, our trees as well. But we did ask our Sun Best to kind of run some calculations about what we've saved so far. Now, very conservatively because they've taken the average about how many cents things are. And we're looking at right around the $8,400, $8,500 mark so far during a time that has not produced a lot of energy with that. We say it's conservative because we have to work, we have to get a little bit more detail with the the electric company because we know that there's more demand charges during peak time than there is outside because it is not included with demand charges are not in there. It's just kind of a kind of a general equation. But again, we asked for a conservative estimate, they gave it to us, and it's right around that $8,500. It's gonna be difficult to say how much we save because obviously, we're operating at a different time right now compared to here ago than what we're doing right now. However, we are producing and we are net metering, so it's just basically, ultimately, we may be selling more energy than consuming. Especially, we have a really, really good month or a couple of good weeks because we're just not consuming that much energy. John has shut everything down that we possibly can, all the way from refrigerators to anything that doesn't need to be running. We're shutting it down just to save what we can during this time too as well. So so you can monitor that. It's on our webpage and we can continue to give the board updates quarterly. I think that would be more than a corporate so that everybody can see that return on investments.
Okay, we're on to committee reports. We've got negotiations committed.
Yeah, we covered it in closed session, but just for for open session, we did, we did exchange proposals on April 6th and we did come back on the 21st. And at this point, the board and the negotiations, a union auto have reached impasse. But we have not moved forward by imposing at this time. So we are just gonna just kind of be patient. We told the union that we would renegotiate with them when we were ready for an additional offer to come back and restart the process. So so we reached impasse, but we are not going to be imposing that that offer that was presented to them. So.
And then the discussion was that at the time when we met on the 21st, it's only all roads themselves.
Yep.
Were the only two districts that were even considering negotiations.
Correct.
As if everybody's just wanted to wait and see what happened.
Yeah, there's not a lot of negotiating going on with anybody at this time. So so right now, we have paused teacher negotiations until further notice. Okay, and then we would be to, so I think we have. We we did see that, you know, that was earlier in the month and again, as highlighted in the in the packet and that was shared. At that time, we did kind of pare back a little bit, but the team did have several conversations about a lot of different things. And Katie really started the question about saying, hey, this is not gonna be done now or can wait. So given the the uncertainty, a little later in the meeting, we'll see what the administration is recommending. We can have a greater conversation if you want to add to that, lead to it at that time during the new business session. Okay, so.
As the facility, as the facility committee continues to work on the intermediate school project or is that the simple as well?
Not at this time. So we, not at this time, but we can talk about that if you want right now because it's part of the facility committee.
I was just curious if any progress has had been made. I know we we had some initial proposals come in and we were gonna work to narrow that down to, you know, three or four or whatever it was gonna be and try and take the next step with that. I was just curious if any progress has been made on that.
Not formally through the facility, no. No, no. Let's talk about that in future meetings, if you can, guys. Because we're gonna make it back to the facility committee, narrow it down, or let's talk about that topic at that time.
Okay, if there's any other questions, we're gonna move on to the business. And we've got the Walkshark County Area Schools Health Insurance Purchasing Cooperative bylaws.
We're voting to accept, accept the bylaws. Yep, by accepting the bylaws, basically reiterates our membership in the insurance purchasing co-op for our health insurance and other insurances that we run the. So just looking forward, a motion to approve the Walkshark County Area Schools Health Insurance Purchasing Co-op bylaws as presented.
I'll make a motion. Approve the Walkshark County Area Schools Health Insurance Purchasing Cooperative bylaw as presented.
Okay.
Hey, we have motion in a second. Is there any discussion? So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same time. Motion's carried. We're on to the CISO 1 contract.
Yep, that's the next. And again, every every year, we just participate in CISO 1, General Services for Parents United and just some very simple, you know, general school improvement services, which help us with grants and things like that too as well. So just looking for motions to approve the 2021 CISO 1 contract as presented.
I'll make a motion to.
I'll make a motion to.
Go for it, yes.
Approve the 2020-21 CISO 1 contract as presented.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion, question? In all favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All the same time. Motion's carried. We have the facility and technology projects. We'll work through those.
Okay, sure. So as you can see, we we pared down some things from the facility committee last time. So really took a look at a couple of things. One is, is what did we see as a high priority in conversation points? Just maintaining the maintenance of our facilities was a very high priority. Hence the reason why we were recommending for the asphalt and the scraping. Again, can you, can you push that off here? We certainly can. Outside of our buildings, that is the most expensive thing we own, basically, is our blacktop and our air surfaces. We just continue to maintain them as we move forward here too as well. So that's why we kept the project on the list. I mean, can be delayed, but we felt just from an annual maintenance component that we should continue to do that too as well. The generator we kept on there and just from a comfortability with our technology, and we continue to engage in the reason why we don't have any of the finalization of the bids yet. It was recommended, can we phase in some other things like the well? And some other opportunities? And if we can't, what's the difference between going from a 40 to a 50 or 60? I think it was a 40 to 60. But but again, just to kind of maintain that technology infrastructure to to not have a crash and have to rebuild because the financialness of having to do that is very, very high from from our recommendation too as well with that. We did take our, then ultimately, we'll start with the products that we would like to move forward with. Obviously, the removal of the old playground equipment site, the equipment's gone, but just to kind of patchwork that is just to get that, those wood chips out of there and that curb and gutter. And then the other two are from the beach pack and we did, since the port packet was created, we did finalize some of the quotes as well. And the boilers, just so you know, Dean, I did give you a little bit of some information there. There were options. We told our vendors to have two quotes, two options. One is just replace what it was. And then compared to the more high efficient, high technology, you know, touchscreen infrastructure, it's about 95% efficient compared to about 80% efficient. And these boilers, John, we anticipate having, well, the last one lasted 20 some years. They don't make them like they used to, but we do anticipate, you know, we would recommend going to the more efficient one just from the standpoint of a little bit better, better technology, easier to use, to maintain, but ultimately more efficient as well too. And the difference between those two is about $3,000, the $3,000 difference. And you will see J M Brennan's bids did come in a little bit lower at at first. And when we look at what was excluded, they were missing between $1,500 and $2,500 worth of work that was needed as part of the bid that would have to be added. Hence the reason why when we calculated all the apples to apples, RZ cooling did come out in actually in the boiler. For the rooftop unit, it was, you know, apples to apples and the RZ cooling did come out lower on that end too as well. The boiler, we need to replace it, started to fail. And the rooftop unit, we mandated that one as much as we could with the heat exchangers, et cetera, et cetera. It's just time for that one to, it's living in life. Both of them have, and we've done, John and his crew have done a really good job of maintaining those. But it's just time for us to replace those as we go there too. So so I guess the, those two were very high items and just kind of the rationale between option one and option two, one of them was more efficient, new technology, newer model compared to just replacing the apples to apples that we have. And that thing's about 20 plus years old. So so those were the things that we we felt that we could bring forward. Originally, it was all the projects that were highlighted from the facility committee totaled right around $200,000. We have pared that back to approximately $135,000. If we take a look at, again, I think just some rationale where we're at. Again, the technology projects, unfortunately, we did deem those all as high because wanting to make sure we, the access points, you know, beginning to fail, just kind of keeping those up there. We talked about the smart panels instead of replacing them with projectors, replacing them with the smart panels with that. And then the STEM lab computers, obviously, they are not gonna be able to function moving forward with the new updates and things like that. And then we have the touchscreen or non touchscreen, which we, Jim, I think your point is is to offer both to our families.
Well, it's always been something that's been asked to just to bring, you know, just bring both options and see if that's an avenue we wanna go. Touchscreen is usually, I mean, in this case, it's about 30 ish dollars more if we offer that to families. So we can, we can go, you know, what we do traditionally, which is just a non touch, but I just put both options in there. And the price that is in there is the non touch version.
So the touch version would be about $30 more?
Yes.
So instead of, what would be the, so would be instead of $200, it'd be around $230?
I think it's $211 for none and then $242 for the touch version.
Touch version?
Yep.
So is that something that we can offer families, the additional 30 or?
We could.
Is it, is it bolt pricing?
We could take a jump into that if we want.
We could take a jump into that. Are we finding, Jim, that the touchscreens are lasting just as long as the non touchscreens? You haven't seen anything?
Yep.
Yep.
I'm, and they're making them strong enough now that the breaks are actually probably higher on the the non touch version anyway.
Yep. So that's something that we, if we would go this direction, we just would more than likely pass that instead of having the device be $211, we would charge $240 over the five years, you know, that means to home, which is still a pretty good deal. So you would, you can see that one is kind of a not to exceed. We would because again, some of them would be less and maybe more. Does Jim, does that number include all touchscreens?
No, that that number is just all non touch because that's what we traditionally have done.
Yep. All right.
So would the option be up to families or would we just offer, that's what we offer?
I I'm com, I'm comfortable doing either or. For some families, it it, you know, it may not be an option to go with the the more expensive version. From an inventory standpoint, it's not a big, you know, for me to, you know, do one or the other or a combination of both. So I'm I'm perfectly fine offering up both choices to families.
And I think what Jim's saying too is, is if somebody's touchscreen breaks, we probably can't guarantee a touchscreen, we'll guarantee a device. But but we'd be able to maintain both.
Yep.
So so I think Jennifer, what I would recommend is is for us to probably give the option because I know it's a nice option that some families really like or some students really like moving forward as well.
That'll probably help too, like handle that stereo mic and stuff.
Yep, yep, certainly.
It offers a lot more. If we're ever stuck in virtual wearing ever again, it offers a lot more options for students to do work because I have my own students writing out decon graphs and stuff, and then they say them and I can see what they're doing. So.
Yeah, and I know from an instructional standpoint, it's a lot easier too. Jim, can you calculate a new number not to exceed with that, with? Jim, can you calculate a new number not to exceed with that, with the additional thirty dollars for us quick?
Sure.
While we're continuing to talk about that. So, so those are the things that we are, we are, we really like to move forward with from a maintenance and a technology side. The ones that we would like to push pause on, one is, the one is refinishing the wood floor. That one we can, you know, get another year out of it. We've been doing a really good job of maintaining, working with central industries with the floor. The reason why we would, we would need to pause it, if you want to move forward, we really need to make that decision tonight because we've got to get out of their schedule. It's something that is a very high priority. It used to be a high list item for a lot of school districts during the summer because that way they really have to shut their, their doors down before the gym. Another thing we're, we're pausing, and actually the next ones, the next several ones, we feel that we can pause and then do at a later time if we needed to. As we take a look at whether it's our surplus, whether the budget comes through, and one is replacing the hallway doors that we talked about before, painting of the four K, carpet and painting areas in their rooms. We've got new urinal dividers as well as stall, stall partitions. Again, these are things that when we order them, they can be here and it's not disruptive to continue to, outside of the painting of the carpet.
Do we have?
We do not.
Okay, that would be high enough, especially if you were to be total. At one thousand seven hundred and sixty-two dollars.
To move up right away. John, did they, did McGuire get back to you about, no, okay. Cause we can find out, because I'm assuming it's probably about sixteen in the meantime, but we can move that up to, to a definite certainty. Yep. And those are privacy panels, basically is what that is across the district in the men's restrooms. So, so those, yeah, we can move that up. It seems like there was a similar mention there. Then the third grade furniture. The, the only piece of the furniture is, again, we're taking a look at a, you know, anywhere between six and twelve weeks, depending on manufacturing and things like that. Out of all of the things that we can do now, if, I would feel comfortable and if we were going to recommend things to do now, the third grade furniture would be the item that, that I would recommend is moving forward with. It's a regular cycle. It is a regular cycle. We have the funds, whether it's next year or the year after, if you buy it now, you can get some good use out of it. Tap it for Fund Forty-One to see what happens. But again, it's not a necessity, but that's one of those things that we can continue to work with our vendors. But it's not like, you know, you, all of a sudden in September, okay, we can afford it now. Then it's eight to twelve weeks and it's Christmas. I have to say we can't do that. But for the entire student experience, you can do, if you do it now, you'll have it ready for the school. Yep, yep. And we were told six to eight weeks at this time, right now. Yep, we started to finish. So if there was one thing, you know, the stall partitions, those are easy, you know, to, to get that going. Cause we did have our contractor fit that out and separate out how much those are compared to the stall partitions as well. So those were kind of the things on the big picture. Obviously, you'll see some other, some other pieces that were just done for normal maintenance and update, just to continue to keep the, the facilities going, whether it be for safety or for aesthetics too as well. So I'm hearing some consensus, or I heard Katie say, hey, can we move the urinal dividers up? And the privacy panels into the necessity ones. Yep, so that would be an addendum there. Is there any movement or conversation about moving the furniture up or do you just want to wait and see? That could be a Fund Forty-One or a Fund Forty-Six purchase.
I think we should get it ordered, just to stay outside one.
I mean, it just really comes down to the, the budget impact or whatever, right? That was the whole reason it was potentially put off.
Who? But it's.
Who, who made the recommendation that it should be delayed? That was based on Sherry at the bottom?
Well, I'd say Sherry, Ron, when we took a look at high priority items. And again, that's why we put it in a not, a not necessity. Because it's not, I mean, our third graders are going to come and they're going to have places to work. They've got furniture, they can, school will go on and then we can postpone that. It's not the highest need. So it was recommended that we, you know, that we not put it on, like, absolutely need to have this because that's not the case. However, when I take a look at how we would fund that, whether it be for this year or the next year, we would be coming out of either Fund Forty-One or Unbalanced or Fund Forty-Six to help offset that purchase, so it wouldn't impact our Fund Ten expenditures, for sure. This is more of a full conversation piece.
Right. Unless they change the rules. Fund Forty-One money building, use those.
Right now it can't, right. We can't use it for staffing or anything else like that, so.
But in, we, we expect the state to say something within the next couple of weeks and give some sort of direction with what's going to happen, correct?
No, 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 not with state funding.
No.
Not with state funding. With summer school, we hope to have some direction, but not. Yep, not state funding, not state funding.
But in the long run, summer school is going to affect their budget.
It could, it could, correct, it could. And that's where the conversation on Madison is, is hey, don't let this lack of summer school this year affect us, take our last three or four or five year rolling averages, which they've done before. They've done some look backs and say, okay, we'll give you the benefit of the doubt. Here is your five-year average. Let's assume that is the number for your revenue limit on the twenty twenty-one.
Can I have a quick question? The four K carpet and painting? Is that something also that we can put in thinking that we're talking about with the third grade furniture?
We certainly can. The night, the piece about the carpeting and the furniture is, is the, the addition of time on that is, is as we continue to close our books in the nineteen-twenty school year, we'll continue to get a sense about how much surplus we have. And that's where we can help possibly offset some of that. And we're not under such a time crunch. I mean, we can continue to, we can put it today. Lindsay, you can, I mean, you guys can allocate those funds today. But I'm not saying from that standpoint, is, is if we advocated those funds, say in June, we feel very confident that we could have that thing up and running by September first before children come in. Just because of timing and what it takes to do that compared to ordering the furniture. Same way with the doors, same way with the, you know, the, the dividers and some of those other things that may happen.
That's fine. I just noticed, isn't four K the last one to get something done?
We are working our way towards five K and four K. Yep, correct. So I mean, should we?
I, I guess if the administration recommendation has changed and the third grade furniture can be on the, we want to do it now, let the.
Well, I mean, I think it's probably Ron's recommendation more than Sherry's. For sure, for sure. I guess we, we, we have the money, we have the money at Fund Forty-One. Let's continue the student experience. And Lindsay, I'm not opposed to yours, but at this point, I think we can pause that a little bit, get a sense about what's happening in the nineteen-twenty school year yet, the surplus, as we continue to monitor that. And I'm not saying, I would say that's probably one of the next things that we should do, for sure. That would be next on my push, but for right now, conservatively, until I kind of get some more numbers from Sherry, I'm just would like, I personally would like to pause that project compared to a larger capital project on rotation that if we're going to do it, we should do it now, or we should wait a year.
So then do we have the two thousand one hundred and seventy-two, which is the initial, not the C five?
Yep, exactly. Yep.
I am. Get a bit skeptic here, but I foresee an inflation issue. And so then we can. Some of the stuff that we make it off for a year, they cost a whole.
Yep, it could. And it was interesting, I was talking to Lindsay too and said, she kind of even asked a question. Is this an opportunity that maybe, you know, people are looking for work, people are looking to pry some things down? We had some wonderful surprises with our H VAC, which was really nice and hopefully the generator will be the same. You know, the, the thirty-two thousand is close to what we paid last year for this, this light furniture as well. So it's, it's right in the ballpark and we continue to really try to narrow those prices down. So I guess, Pete, to your point, if you're going to make a motion to be, to approve the facility and technology projects as presented with the addition of not to exceed thirty-two thousand for third grade furniture and the seventeen
Sixty-two.
Seventeen sixty-two for privacy panels for the men's restrooms.
Okay. That in addition to the initial facility project, seven hundred and thirty-five thousand.
Yep.
I'll make a motion for the facility project statute, save one hundred and thirty-five thousand with the addition of the thirty-two thousand for third grade furniture and the seventeen sixty-two for privacy panels.
All taken.
Oh. Do a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, let us say aye.
Aye.
All will say aye. Motion's carried. All right. Thank you very, very much for that conversation. Really appreciate it.
Okay, so art curriculum. As you can see, our, our team has been working on the, the curriculum. The State of Wisconsin did put out some standards, which were then modeled ultimately after what some of our desires were in our program as well. It's, it's pretty detailed. Again, we did not detail exactly what the art projects are compared to the standards that would be addressed to each grade level. And you'll see that the Johnson did outline our current art offerings as it relates to what they do as it relates to the standards too as well. Again, this is just being presented for the board to consider. As again, we would be looking for a final approval that, you know, maybe in May, if there's any further questions, we can revisit that too as well. But it's been an ongoing process, just really reviewing the State of Wisconsin art standards and putting them together. Moving forward. So again, any questions right now on the art standards? If you have further questions too, let me know and I can get those addressed as well. The SEL curriculum, we have put on pause the student achievement committee. Hopefully, Katie, Jennifer, and Bill, we saw an invitation for next week for us to get together. We will share, I don't know if you've seen the results of the survey yet. Few more people, okay, so we'll set that date. But has the student achievement committee seen the results of the survey that was sent out to the piloting teachers?
Now.
No, so I will share that with you guys. Again, it was very positive, but not enough for us to just say, hey, the teachers are there. This is it. So that's why we'd like to have one more virtual meeting with the SEL committee to really review the pilot as well as the data that was collected. And I do anticipate us making a motion or making a recommendation to the board for first draft come May and then June to be for final approval, which is plenty of time for us to get everything to take order and then start the process of onboarding, if in fact we go with doing that scale. Now, this is just focused around students. Yeah, this is a student K through eight curriculum that we're looking at implementing for the twenty twenty-one school year. So I will get the student achievement committee those survey results. Okay, so a big thank you to Jim. I've been working on that and, you know, answering questions, squeezing information out of people. And as you can see, and again, we did talk to Phil, because this is something that we took, we went through the finance committee to be able to do that. Since Chris has vacated, we did talk to Phil informally about this and he seems to be, you know, capable of moving this forward to the entire board conversation as well. In the board package, you'll find not only the RFP that was used to create, try to generate an apples-to-apples review of the copy and printer services, but also give a good dose of her reality for us. And then you'll also see the, the summary where Jim did put the, the items kind of side by side to kind of see a good bill maintenance there. As you can see, it's kind of, you know, this kind of work in port package, you know, it's, there's some closeness, there's a lot of close. A couple of vendors were very, very close and that was mostly cord and flesh as well as impact. Impact, copying and printing. It is a little bit higher than what we have been paying for our copy and print services. Jim and I did feel last time, when they came in though, they did a good job of buying our business and really felt that they did under, you know, underestimate what it is that they were proposing to as well. So the relationship with James and Mitch had been really good, but however, they have proposed a little bit higher price. And with that, as you can see, the, the two of them that have come in the lowest and that we feel comfortable are really kind of narrowing down with cord and flesh and impact. And cord and flesh is a little bit more expensive, just a tad. But we do have a prior relationship with them. We did have a three-year deal with them prior to this and it was a good relationship. We had no issues at all. We've got nothing bad to say about cord and flesh either. Both of them have been, been very, very good contractors. Cord and flesh has been chomping at the bit to get back in, probably for about a year now. They've been waiting for this opportunity. And we do like their proposal. Again, slightly larger than impact, but we know that as a company and we've had a really good, good rapport and a good run with them, you know, prior to jumping on to cord and flesh. So, so our recommendation would be to the board to consider approving a three-year contract with cord and flesh for district copy and printing services.
Play a, a, a motion to approve the three-year contract with cord and flesh for district copy and printing.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? In all favor say aye.
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 All will say aye. Motion's carried. Thank you. We have future meeting agenda items. Next meeting coming quick.
Yep. Now, if we want to pause that, it's May eighteen, we can go Tuesday or Wednesday after Memorial Day, that works for people too.
I don't want to take a chance on that. I think everything was canceled for me. And May, I have a lot of bad. Okay.
So is everybody okay with May eighteen? So we. When we think about the things that, that we, we'll be able to turn around, you know, contracts and obviously we've got, you know, First Amendment. Sherry will be typically, we've done a budget presentation. We'll continue to talk about it. That's something we still want to do, given the realities about what it is. Our annual meeting is set for September. We typically just kind of preview next year's budget about what it is. It would all be a guest. So Sherry and I have worked that out about, you know, maybe some other things that we might present as impact, but it's going to be a ring of guests until we get some solid numbers with that too. So I do want to go back to what Phil's conversation was, is do we want to get the facility team together? Or I know I have heard back from a few people about which vendors they would like to kind of bring back and engage with the, the architect firm. It is something that we can pause to the fall if you want. It does. We are getting into what I would probably call some major, very, very close window. We are going to start doing some major remodel come next June, when you take a look at all the processes and the bidding that would have to take place. So it, it is something that we could pause, you know, we push the project off a year, basically. But it is something that, you know, we start to think about interviewing companies that wouldn't be face to face. It would be a different selection process. It would require basically us asking those companies to, or narrowing down, maybe we can narrow down the three or four that we want to break that later in the fall. Or would we handle face to face? But if we wait any longer, it will pause the project just based on everybody else's timeframes, given collecting of information from people, getting people together is going to be a really big struggle to your end right now too as well. And the other piece is, is obviously you can get a framework for what it's going to cost. We do know that there's phase one and phase two, but given some of the uncertainties moving forward, you know, I haven't really thought of a recommendation, but we're kind of pausing all the things that really don't have to happen right now as it relates to curriculum and things like that, unless it's really a necessity. That would be one of the things that kind of falls to me, you know, probably more of a luxury than anything else.
I guess I don't know that I see, I, I would like to see it continue moving forward, I guess, but you know what? You know, everyone can do it some call or a hangout or whatever, with the in-person meeting and that, you know, that's fine. Obviously, all those companies are, are doing all of that right now anyway. You know, just to your point, if, if we start delaying, then it's just going to delay and delay. And there's not a great reason to do. And there's not a great reason to do that. Obviously there are some budget impacts that are going to be happening, you know, based on, on the closure right now. But, you know, we will know if that's a substantial long-term or short-term impact for a couple of months anyway. So we may as well keep tracking down that line of evaluating and making a collection. You know, before we, you know, we will know more about our budget before we need to make a final decision.
We will, we will know more about the budget. We would have to, again, if you wanted to stay on the timeline. You would need to commit to a contract or a firm, uh, to start that process. And that would be.
Yeah, but that's, that's very different than signing up that actually knew the project.
Correct, correct. Yep, yep. We did break it up into two phases. So there's a phase one commitment and obviously the phase two would be the construction project.
I mean, for a lot of the, the architectural fees were on the order of, oh, we were just talking about spending for third grade furniture.
Correct. Yep, yep. I'm pulling up right now, Phil, about what the, uh, the compensation plan was for project fees. And, uh, from a fee standpoint. Uh, you know, it, it's, yeah, between.
Yeah, very little bit, I'm pretty much got what's up paid, but it was, it was on the order of thirty-ish thousand dollars.
Correct. It, because it's a, right, because you would really want to, to select a firm. Because some firms had a lower phase one fee than, than others, but they had a lower phase or higher phase one, lower phase two. So kind of all washed together, um, with that. But yeah, so you would be committing about thirty thousand dollars, correct. On a, I mean, a safe estimate. But it depends. If you go with another one, it could be, you know, ten thousand.
Yeah, and that's coming out of. Money that's already allocated to facility projects.
It would be.
From a budgetary.
Correct. We, we could allocate that to.
So it's not like it's coming out of our, our normal, you know, pool of, of money we get to, you know, from the operation.
No, no, it wouldn't affect the operations. It's not going to be either do this or not do that. It would come from a different facility, correct. The question would be is, is are we ready to respond to what they tell us? And that could be either in the future, you know, one year, two years, the next year. But I guess my point about this.
I guess my point was, is even if we pursue them and, you know, went through the process of, process of evaluating the next three. And then, you know, selected someone and started the actual design phase. You know, that's some relatively small amount of money to get to that point before you actually break ground and start construction.
Correct.
The construction is the large dollar value. So that would give us the flexibility of. Potentially starting the construction on our original schedule. If everything turns up rosy, and if it doesn't, we would just delay the construction portion of the project for a year.
Correct.
And have the design in the base.
Correct. Yep, and given the uncertainties, um, it would be a forward thinking because ultimately we're going to have to pause. And we have to talk to those, look at those construction cycles. Cause I do believe we would probably have to start right around November to start getting all the bids together. At a minimum, to, to start some things either in April and or June to get that process going. But you're right, but what Phil's talking about is, is do you want to get those concept plans? And see what the feasibility is about what we can do, given the recommendations. Um, knowing that you may have to pause that, you know, a year, depends on what, uh, everything shakes out from the state.
What is the logistics? Cause you know, once we get. In selecting art that I thought we were bringing in staff.
Yep.
And trying to terminate things to executive media, difficult process.
Um, we would have to do that virtually, um, for our staff more than likely. I mean, you can welcome them to come in, you know, groups of one to ten right now. Uh, our buildings are open. And, uh, would, would be less intense. So it's not insurmountable. Um, it would be different than, you know, we, it'd be great to do it by grade level and we can still do, achieve that. It's just would be a virtual ring. Yep. And, uh, we would have to probably do that with our architects on campus. So when a teacher starts to talk about, hey, I really wish I, you know, had a facility that looked like this compared to what I have. So there would be a sense about what it is. But again, nothing that can't continue. And I think these people are getting really good at doing it because that's what they had to do to, to, uh, maintain their business at their cost.
From the facility committee. What do you get to do, Katie? Bring what recommendation? Like, who want to read to?
I think it's important to get, you know, what in feedback from staff and all people that this is going to affect. Um, I'm also cautious to be spending. At least seventy-five thousand, because we're talking about three firms, right? That we would invite in.
No, we would.
On that list of three?
We would, we would narrow, we, we have seven firms who responded, seven or eight. And, uh, we would interview them and then we would select one firm to then begin the work. And depending on which firm that is, it could be anywhere between basically ten thousand and thirty thousand for them to do the work. Um, that would be in phase one with the design phase.
And already just kind of, um.
Yep, you, yep, you supplied, Phil has replied, re- replied to, who he would like to see continue to move forward in the process. Um, obviously we have an administrative list, uh, administrative recommendation as well. Um, we can get this facilitated, uh, fairly quickly, just working with the board through the interview process. They can probably help us with that. We've got technology to be able to put that forward. Um, it's just getting those dates on the calendar and giving that time that everybody can.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't be opposed to it as long as we can make it a collaborative experience.
Good one. Yep. Um, it can be a collaborative.
I think the, the collaboration is, my understanding at least was. You know, the board kind of narrows it down and ends up, you know, selecting the firm. And then the collaboration with the staff at large happens. And that's when those, you know, the architecture, architects would come in or do, do virtually. And have those conversations around needs and wants and then all of that. That, that's where the collaboration happens as opposed to having the staff collaborate on selecting the firm.
Correct. Yeah, that would be an administration board decision.
Right, yeah.
Yeah. No, but then I think part of the process, Katie, to answer your question, would be, hey, how are you going to engage our staff virtually? What does that look like? How do you gather feedback? Um, do you, and then ultimately, we would need to probably do through those interviews, probably shore up some of your either questions. Or, you know, do we move forward or don't we? Or if we're not happy with anybody's, and this is how we would do it virtually. Then you probably have to pause the project.
But if we just like, kind of. They, they have a better understanding of how, of what I'm creating with the staff. Because they're doing it right now.
Right. And they're going to have to sell us something. And that's my biggest, you know, not only, you know, X's and O's, and you know, I mean. All these firms are going to be able to do something really cool for us and do what we're asking. But who's, what's the separator? What's that value added? How are you going to engage people? How are you going to bring collaboration together in a time where very difficult, you know, what does that look like?
But they're doing it now.
They're doing it now, oh, for sure.
They're getting track of it.
For sure. That's fine. Okay. So what I'll do then is, is I'll update you guys and get some dates on the calendar. Um, if anybody else has any feedback, uh, about the firms, please let me know. Um, and if you could let me know by Thursday, that would be great. Uh, because I do have the firms calling all the time and saying, hey, how we doing? How we doing? Um, so, uh, actually by Wednesday, Thursday, Monday, Thursday would be great. Um, cause that way we can set up some times. I can kind of see when they're available. Um, I would envision, you know, a thirty-minute, thirty to thirty-five, forty-minute interviews. I'll kind of look and see what everybody else has done and talk to our team and put something together. Um, I assume in the evening probably works best, uh, for people. But again, we can get that all calculated once we get some dates narrowed down. Okay. All right. Off the circle, that you get. Okay. Did we want to set a June meeting now or do we want to just wait till next month?
By the way.
You said?
Sure.
I mean, that's fine. Um, we were shooting for, uh, typically we do the last Monday of the month. Uh, let me.
June twenty-ninth.
June twenty-ninth. Sherry, anything from, uh, June twenty-ninth would probably work.
Twenty-ninth is fine by me.
I think it'd be good to do it still. Lindsay and Jennifer, you guys around?
Yes, they were.
Okay. We know I do virtual meetings, so. Probably can make that regardless of where you are, um, as well. So we'll just shoot for June twenty-ninth then.
I also wanted to suggest that we continue doing the Zoom even after we, or hang out or whatever, or me. Even after we, you know, are able to come back in person, because we're actually getting quite a few people that are coming on that aren't able to come in person.
Sure, we certainly can. We can, we can continue live streaming. Not a problem. That's easy now. So, okay.
Well, there's no other items. Someone like to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Make a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All the same side? The meeting is adjourned.